That was yesterday.
Where you been?
You voted against it, come to work.
Yeah, you voted against the meeting, so we didn't have it.
Wow, this is beautiful.
This is great. Oh, where's my girl? Oh, she's at the track meet.
We're live? Yeah, public just bear with us, we have a lot of visitors. Did we let the public in? Public is in. Alright, I'm gonna take off, fair enough. Okay. I would like to call to order the work action media of the Bogota Board of Education of Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty, I'm sorry, March twenty eighth, uh, twenty twenty-three, please stand for the flags.
To the flag, United States of America.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time placed thereof in the borough, in the Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record, filed with the clerk of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website.
You hear it?
I do hear, I can kick back.
Yeah, kick back.
Um, Erfa, please roll call.
Mrs. Alvarez.
Present.
Mr. Alvarez.
Present.
Mr. Chavez.
Present.
Mrs. Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Navarro.
Present.
Mrs. Oliver.
Present.
Mr. Ortega. Absent. Ms. Rocket.
Present.
Mr. Miranda.
Present.
We have the core.
Thank you very much. Also, President, a present is Superintendent Damian Kennedy, Student Council Representative. Um, not today, Board Attorney William Sukis, School Business Administrator, Board Secretary Erfan Efsel, and Assistant Board Secretary Elizabeth Ruiz. May I have a motion? On hearing of citizen remarks on agenda items only.
Motion, Oliver.
Motion, open floor, Oliver, thank you very much, Mr. Chavez, second. Any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there any member of the public who would like to discuss any items of a jet on the agenda only? Speakers, please state your name and address, you have five minutes. No one, Mr. Kennedy? No. May I have a motion to close, uh, citizen hearing of the citizens on agenda items only?
Motion.
That was Mrs. Rocket and Mr. Alvarez, that correct?
Mm-hmm.
For a second, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to superintendent's room, superintendent's report, Mr. Kennedy.
Good evening. Obviously, first, congratulations to everybody on passing the referendum, both questions. The last time we were here was the night of the vote, but I think we can all agree it was a great night. Some next steps is we will be issuing bonds in July. Uh, surveys and, and site designs are beginning now. Conversations with the town will be had over the next couple of weeks to formulate a plan moving forward to see what we can do down there at those fields to make it the best possible situation for everyone involved. Uh, we had one confirmed H I B in the middle school since our last meeting. Also, uh, we have finalized our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year calendar. Uh, we have two days to give back, we are going to put that on at the end of the school year, so our last day of school will be Tuesday, June twentieth. Will be the last official day of school, but we have set our graduations for all four buildings. This will be the, the one time that all four buildings have a graduation. Uh, Bixby is set for Monday, six twelve. We have a board meeting on six thirteen. Steen will be six fourteen. The middle school will be six fifteen, and then finally, the high school will be Friday night, six fifteen. Um, so that will all be, be sent out to our schools, uh, families and, uh, and members of the community, so that they're aware. Reminder that we were off on Good Friday, there was chatter about maybe having a single session, but with our new, um, calendar, recognizing all the, uh, holidays, we didn't want to take away Good Friday. Uh, and after talking to different groups of people, it was best to keep the calendar the same this year. Uh, reminder, we will be off Juneteenth, that is why our last day will be the twentieth. Um, we also are here tonight, we're gonna recognize uh, some groups of students who have done some great things. Um, first, we're gonna call up is our volleyball coach, Mr. Brad Derupo, to talk a little bit about the season and then have the kids come up and we're gonna take a picture. Uh, part of the policy always is, is when a team wins a state championship or a league title, uh, the school district, uh, and the board, uh, will then sponsor that and give them uh, uh, some type of jacket or apparel to wear. So we like to recognize those students at a, a board meeting, so Mr. Derupo, if you come to the podium and grab the microphone, please.
Yeah, Mr. Kennedy.
Alright, thank you. Volleyball team's happy to be here, before that occurs, I would like to congratulate the board on the referendum getting passed. Um, I've been here since nineteen ninety-six as the A D. It's like a breath of fresh air. Um, it's, it's amazing stuff, and, uh, you know, we're all, the kids are looking forward to it as well as the coaches. This year's volleyball team? Well, let me start talking about the volleyball program. In the last twelve years, this, this program has won ten state championships, uh, which is amazing. This year's team, which I consider the best team I ever coached here, two thousand twelve was a little bit better, the bar a little harder, higher, excuse me, they won, they won the county tournament, these kids finished second, which is amazing. Uh, this year's record was twenty-eight and two. We got blown out at I H A, and then in this county finals, we lost in three tough sets. Uh, these kids played amazing, and I was so proud of them afterwards, and they were upset and crying. There's no reason to cry. Hold your heads up high, you did, you did great. You were, you were terrific and wonderful. Won a league title, won the section title, it's the fourteenth year in a row. Uh, they, they went to section titles in volleyball fourteen years ago, we won such a title every year, as well as a group that's loud. As well as the group once a title, obviously. But again, the, this, I consider this team the second best team. Um, they were a, a great group to coach, uh, the seniors talented, very, very talented, and, uh, at this point, I'd like to call them up, I'm gonna start with the freshmen. So if I call your name up, come right up here. So you just wanna go first or last? What? First? You said first or last? Last. Fashionable, I guess. Jiritsa Acevedo. Come up here, Dritsa. And where's your jacket, Jiritsa? Yeah, call her up here. She has a white jacket, believe me. I don't know where it is, but she has one. Kirsten Abreu. Anaya Lopez. Laura Estvez. Isabel Cruz. Sophia Kimball. Sarah Marquez. Emma Fowler. Those were our freshmen right there. Sophomores, Francesca Siri. Ally Rachapi. I know I said that wrong. I gave it a try, Ally. Is uh, Bella Cruz, who just, we just had a softball scrimmage, so she just came from the softball scrimmage, as well as these other ladies just came from their track scrimmage. Raii Jackquez. And Adam Marius Pinos. Those are our tenth graders. Eleventh graders, Sophia Morrow. Kelly Zaniga. Janelli Jimenez, Jimenez, but she doesn't know it either. Don't worry, Jaiel, I did not forget you. Jaiel Lozano. And the twelfth grades. Sinae Burrell. She's missing her white jacket too. I don't get it. Carol Velada. Angelina Bueller. Also from the softball field. I don't usually like to do this, but these, these last two kids won some honors, and I think it's, 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 uh, they should be recognized, so we'll start out with Ashana, Ashana's the eighth athlete in the history of the school. Uh, to be first team all-state, which means she was top eight players in the sport of volleyball. She's also the second player, we had one girl achieve it three years, sophomore, junior, senior years. Then we had Sam Jos, Josad do it his junior and senior years, Ashana did her junior and senior years. And then the last player is Mia Pimentel. Mia is also an all-state player, as well as a first-team all-county player, and by the way, Angelina was an all, or first-team all-county player. So that's it, this is the two thousand twenty-two state champ, oh. Here we are.
Come on, girls.
Logan has made it.
Yay.
This is Malon Logan, come on up. Congratulations, and they got their white jackets. Alright, now I'll say two thousand twenty-two state champion Lady Bucks volleyball team. Now, it's all about the kids. You won? Yeah, freshman in front, let's go. Let's go. Take a knee or sit down.
Yes.
Carol, we can't see you, Carol. Thank you. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the board for their support, thank you for getting us the jackets. Congratulations, like Mr. Rubio said on the referendum, we're obviously very excited about, uh, the things happening in Bogota, so thank you. Um, our girls cross-country team, we won our first triple crown in twenty-four years, which, uh, in cross-country, that's the league, the county group, and the state sectional, so that was the first time since nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, so we're very proud of our girls team, I have Coach Verone here as well. And here are the girls that are present tonight, I'll start with the freshmen, we have Kathleen here, Kathleen Aparicio, uh, Jasmine Taneo, Anna Michelle, Fergie Onyate, Tatum Sandoval Diaz, Christina Termalacetian. Alright, did I forget any freshmen? Alright, next, I think we go right to juniors, we have Isabel Michelle and Annabelle Jimenez. And our seniors, we have Dianaara Kiroz Aparicio, as well as Denise Sodamayor, and Amadeen Fernandez, who was first-team all-county, and she's the first, uh, first-team all-county girl in our program's history. This is our girls cross-country team, triple crown champs. Thank you again for having us.
And then lastly, we have a group of students here, uh, this year, uh, students from Bogota High School competed for the first time in the Bergen County Mock Trials Competition. They practiced and prepared a case for a full trial, they prepared the plaintiff's side, the defense side. These students prepared opening statements, direct and cross-examination questions for witnesses and expert witnesses, witnesses and closing arguments. Their hard work accumulated in presenting the case in a real courtroom before a real judge against other schools. They have learned how the system works and have gained a unique insight into how the trial works. They have all committed to participating again next year. I would like to call up Ms. Alcaday to call, uh, to just come up first, and if you want to say a couple of words too, that would be great.
I don't, I don't know if I need this, I'm Cuban and I'm a trial lawyer, so I'm naturally loud. But, um, I, I wanna thank Frank Miranda and Mr. Kennedy for helping and making this program possible. These kids are amazing, I mean, they, as someone who's tried over two hundred real-life jury trials, I can tell you that these kids performed at such a level, the judge was impressed, everyone was impressed by them, we're gonna do it again next year, and we're gonna keep doing it till all of you graduate, and I expect some future lawyers out of this crowd, because they were really, really amazing. I spoke to them, and they don't want to be called out specifically by name, they just want me to call out the whole group. And I did, uh, I did tell them that, you know, as lawyers, especially trial lawyers, they're gonna eventually develop a big ego, so, you know, I they have to work on that a little bit, but I think these kids are amazing, and I'm so proud of all the work they did, and again, Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Miranda, thank you so much for getting this program started. And then not all of them, I just have to say, not all of them are here, um, some of the kids couldn't make it today, but we do have the, the bulk of our, of our team, and they, they were lawyers, they played witnesses, um, and like I said, they prepared a whole case, presented it in front of a real judge in a real courtroom, both defense and plaintiff's side. I'm very proud of you guys.
Okay, board, um, and public, members of the public, we're gonna take a quick recess, uh, to enjoy some quality time uh, with those winners, those participants, so if, what are you saying? I'll take, I take a motion to recess, ten minutes. Chavez, may I have a second?
Right.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we'll reconvene at approximately seven thirty-five.
Thank you.
Take care.
Yeah, yeah, she rejects.
Motion to reconvene?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Oliver.
Mrs. Oliver, all in, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let me just catch up here. Well, really quick, I wanna give a shout out to Adriana Alcalde. And not just because she's my neighbor, but the honest truth is that I probably had five minutes meeting her. I had purchased my property, I was knocking it down, I probably wasn't the most favorable neighbor for about ninety days. But besides all the garbage I had running around the property, the first thing she brought to my attention was that she had won state championships in, in, in debate teams out of the state of Florida. And, and it's interesting because I think most of you have heard me sometime and somewhere in the process. Ideally, and this is just a personal thing, right? Hopefully, one day we could get there. It's like named the high school after an expertise, right? High School of Science and Litigation, High School of Math, etc. So I constantly challenged Kennedy with that task. When are we gonna call ourselves, but go to high school of something, of some sort? Just to get more, more appealing, to, to be, you know, the center of something and belong somewhere. And she had, and I had kinda expressed that, and she said, oh, by the way, this is what I've done. And, and I said, you know, I, I would love to see you do that, and she didn't let down. You know, in, in, normally in this business or in this process, people offer a lot of things, right? And most recently, we had a dance program that came with the whole grant. And that guy really paved through and started building dance a- across our schools. And then Adriana brought this program. And I gotta tell you, when you mention it, you tend to ignore it. People sometimes believe, you know, kids are not gonna be into this. Well, we see that's not necessarily true. And it takes immense courage for any child to go in the court system. And as open as I am, I've been in the court system for other reasons, and that is scary. So all I'm saying is to go out there, defend it in front of a judge, play the roles of an attorney, you know, play the roles of a plaintiff, play the roles of an older, whatever, it takes a lot of courage. But I wanna thank you, Adriana, for giving that, giving this school district that opportunity. I hope more to come. I hope attorneys hear us loud and clear and offer an hour or two of their services to help our kids flourish because I, one of the things that impact me the most, I, I think I told you, Adriana, and I do want someone to reach out to her. We have a Bogota graduate from 2018 or seventeen, who is now an Assistant District Attorney of the Bronx. You know, that is powerful. And I think we need to find, I'll remember, I have the video, it was at our graduation, she spoke. And apparently, we've had two, so I believe in good karma, I believe in legacy. And I believe that if we can bring those folks back who graduated, grew up in Bogota, and you might change one, two, maybe five lives. And I know when I was in senior or sophomore or junior, I had no clue where I was going. And maybe this is an opportunity, I just heard one say, I think I'm gonna be an attorney. You know, wherever you land on your feet, I wish you the best, I think this district wishes you the best. And if one day you become an attorney, come back and do what Adriana does. So I thank you, I cherish you for that. I think the board is in agreement with all the head nodding here. I truly appreciate you and Bogota does too. Thank you so much, and you deserve, thank you.
We second.
Anyone here that knows Frank, knows he was very persuasive. But I'm glad he did, and I was just telling them, it put me into something that I, I enjoyed so much. I, honestly, if I won the lottery tomorrow, I would probably stop practicing law and then I'd make the job.
That's awesome.
And, and I'm gonna tell you something, just so you know Adriana's schedule. So we both fly often. And the reason we know that is because we're taking Ubers at five in the morning, she's headed to Miami, I'm heading to Chicago, or we're headed to Miami on similar flights, so just so you know. And I come back the same day, two days later, day after, she does the same. So when we talk about volunteerism, it's all fine and dandy when you're sitting in Bogota. But when you get on a plane, you come back and you still make that, that goes a million miles.
Thank you.
Honestly, it was an honor to work with, they're amazing. At first, I hooked them by coming by proxy food, and then they just enjoyed it so much, and they all said they're gonna enjoy it next. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For starting this up, I, I love it. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought I did, okay, I think, yeah, I did, I did, I did to reconvene. You have that right? Okay, moving on to section four dot four, approval of agenda items four dot one and four dot two and four dot three, which includes the minutes of February seventh, twenty twenty-three work action meeting and February twenty-eighth, regular meeting, both open and closed session. Do I have any comments or corrections? Moving on to sec-
Uh-uh, this is a work action, you gotta approve it.
You're gonna approve it.
Yeah, this is a, a, yeah.
Move to approve four, four point four, which includes four point one, four point two, and four point three, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Who did that? Rocket. All in favor?
Aye.
No, any board discussion?
No, no, this is a, this is, this is not a work action.
Yeah, board discussion, and then roll call. So any board discussion? May I have a roll call, Mr. Erfan?
Mrs. Alvarez.
Mrs. Alvarez had to take her class.
Okay. Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to policy portion of the agenda. Five dot one, second reading of approval of items, board policies and regulations, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Rocket, any board discussion? Erfan?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the education portion of the agenda, resolution seven dot thirteen, which is the approval for, I'm sorry, six dot thirteen, which is approval for of agenda item six dot one through six dot twelve. Do I have a motion to approve six dot thirteen? Alvarez? Mr. Alvarez, is that a second, Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Any board discussion? Mr. Erfan?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
On resolution six dot sixteen, which is for the approval of item six dot fourteen and six dot fifteen, is there a motion to approve resolution six dot sixteen?
Motion.
Mrs. Rocket, second. Mr. Chavez, any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to personnel portion of the agenda, item seven dot nine, approval of agenda item seven dot one through seven, and through seven dot eight. Is there a motion to approve seven dot nine?
Motion.
Mr. Navarro? Mr. Chavez, a second?
Yes.
Any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
On item se- on item seven dot fifteen, for the approval of agenda item seven dot ten through the, seven dot fourteen, do I have a motion to approve resolution seven dot fifteen?
Oliver?
Mr. Oliver, do I have a second? Mr. Navarro, any board discussion? Mr. Erfan?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the finance portion of the agenda, resolution eight dot eleven, approval of consent agendas eight dot one through eight dot ten. Is there a motion to approve resolution eight dot eleven?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Alvarez.
Mr. Alvarez, any board discussion? Erfan?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
On the item eight dot sixteen, approval of agenda items eight dot twelve through eight dot fifteen, is there a motion to approve resolution eight dot sixteen?
Motion, Oliver.
Mr. Chavez, second, Miss Oliver?
Yes.
Any board discussion? Roll call, Mr. Erfan.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the building and ground section of the agenda, resolution nine dot one, approval of application for school property, use of school property, is there a motion to move, resolution nine dot one?
Motion, Cruz.
Mrs. Susan Cruz, Mr. Alvarez, got a second?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. Any board discussion? Mr. Erfan?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Mrs. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Rocket?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Sometimes this feels like an auction, right? Next in the committee reports, ten dot one, are there any committee reports this evening?
Yes, the negotiation committee closed its, had its last conversation with the BEA, and as you saw from what's in your agenda, we have concluded negotiations with that.
I want to applaud you because it is very rare that we get to conclude negotiations for many districts by this point in time, so I wanna congratulate Mrs. Rocket.
I say, and I said this to Mr. Kennedy, the majority of the, the kudos go to Mr. Epsil and to the BEA leadership itself, they really helped us get through, it kept the conversations open, fluid, everyone was talking. And that level of open communication allowed us to move a lot faster.
I agree.
I second that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any board, any other board members with the committee?
Well, didn't we just have a meeting? Education committee met today. Yeah, yeah, Valia's off already.
Okay.
Mr. Kennedy provided updates as to a lot of things going on, especially that mentoring program, that a few months back, I had attended a seminar, a virtual meeting on, so it was great to hear that that's up and running for us. And he provided other updates about the summer program and ongoing addition to AP courses, science training, phonics curriculum, and FDU STEM program, hopefully coming up.
So, just to, because we always get a lot of people that wonder, what is it that we do, right? So we won't, I won't elaborate totally on it, but from AP courses for a small school district, did we say eight or so, eight or so, eight or nine? Right? So that's, that's huge next year. There's some Title I funding and additional programs that are being considered and running, such as connect, there's also connect, check and connect monitoring program, Phoenix Curriculum, science training, as I mentioned, AP courses, some summer programming, and, and as you mentioned, FDU STEM partnership. And, and let's not forget the Bergen Community College Advanced Degree, I guess, you know, to get associate's degree, as you're also getting your high school diploma. I actually recently just met someone, it's kinda at your own pace, so it's amazing. I, I think that sometimes we don't, apparently, we don't promote each other, our district as much as we probably should. I know a lot of letters go out, every school has a newsletter that goes out on Fridays, is that correct? And, and it's very competitive, you could tell by each other's colors, they're competing to get the best newsletter out. People need to read it because it seems like every time I run into someone, they're very confused whether or not this district is doing more. And every time I get a piece of sheet from Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Erfan, I personally call him Money Man Erfan.
You don't get enough credit.
Make it stable.
I like that. He just, he just really allocates the pennies well, and I say pennies because we all know if we had a lot more monies, we would do a lot more things. And by recently getting more monies from the state, because we have been heavily underfunded, it, it tells you that we, prior to that, we did a lot with nothing. And that has to be recognized over and over again, whether we're up here or not, all right? So I'm gonna move on. Next on the agenda is old business in items eleven dot one, is there any old business the board would like to discuss? Well, I'm gonna take this opportunity because although it's old, it feels brand new to me. Thank you to the public for that referendum, thank you to the public for that referendum, thank you to whoever voted for that referendum. If you only knew how many people thought that we were gonna fail. I've received numerous calls from various places, county personnel, neighboring personnel, board members, board presidents, asking, how did you guys do it? Ninety-nine, I heard one say ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of referendum failed, and about a hundred percent failed the first time, that's kinda what they said. We passed the first time. I mean, I, that's a big deal, guys, I know that it seems okay, we got over the hype, but that, it doesn't end now, it gets really loud, very boisterous, and I have no problem in being arrogant in saying that Bogota did it, Bogota did it because there were a lot of parents. You know, I gotta kudos to everybody here, I heard all your opinions, I heard all your your concerns, right, because you were getting bombarded by parents, by people, by, I just heard it in the back, you know, I just heard it in the back, that people still think we lied. And it's shame on them, shame on them, because we couldn't have been any more cookie cutter. I had people pit me against the tax assessor, I had conversations there. You know, it, it just shocks me when the vision doesn't exist, and I don't know what happens to life and future if you don't see it, you don't look for it, so I'm immensely proud, I know everybody here is immensely proud. That night came in huge for us. At the same token, I do want to apologize, I gotta apologize to your seniors, I gotta apologize to your sophomores, your juniors, your freshmen, you know, because and sometimes it, it rocks me because I came to Bogota from Harlem, and I didn't know, you know, the problem is you come from New York, and you probably spend the first five years or four years living in New, living in Bogota, but spending your life in New York until you kinda get adaptive to the new environment. Anxiety sets in because it's too quiet. Anxiety sets in because Quick Check closes at twelve o'clock and you're used to eating a sandwich at two in the morning. So there's a lot that goes with that change, a drastic change, right? And when that happens, you start getting involved with the recs in the park, and you realize that Harlem and promising politicians come by, and somehow they give us more than Bogota had to offer. And it's true, my rec center was a lot better than this. My box, I had a boxing program, I had a running program, I had a swimming program. And granted, while we didn't have the uniforms to do it, we had the programs. You know, we had the programs and we had things, we have parks, we have fields, I'll never forget. I didn't, I didn't have a clue what soccer was, and in Jefferson Park in Harlem, in East Harlem and Barrio, they put a soccer field. And, and I didn't know what, you know, to be honest, you're so enclosed into a Puerto Rican- And, and I didn't know what, you know, to be honest, you're so enclosed into a Puerto Rican or an African American, that's all we were. And then all of a sudden you meet Mexicans, Salvadorians, and you start realizing Ecuadorians. You start realizing there's, you know, as a young child, you're like, ooh, there's new people. And they start teaching you new sports, and you might, you know, I really sucked the soccer assholes, I could tell you. But, but, but the, but the thing is, I knew what it was, I knew the details of it, and, and, and you start meeting people, so it was shocking to. It was a state of shock, you know, you're too involved in your business, you're too involved in travel. And then when you get really involved in Bogota, since my council days, I realized, wow, we're lacking, we're lacking. And this just put us twenty-five years ahead of the game. Um, I truly hope that the borough and council, whoever's up there, uh, works with us to make this happen. And conclude this once and for all for the kids, I apologize to those kids that previous boards didn't have that vision, didn't have the guts. To go out and do it, because that's what it's taken up here, it's taken a lot of guts, and I'm not gonna ever change that opinion, it took guts. We were all afraid at one point, we were all positive, we all questioned each other, but it took a lot of tenacity to make this happen. And I thank you for that. And I'll conclude there, and I apologize. Uh, moving on to section twelve dot one, next on the agenda is new business at twelve dot one, is there any new business the board would like to discuss?
I have two comments to make.
Hi, Ms. Trina.
Uh, this past week, the Bogota High School, Junior Senior High School, um, PTO. Hosted a Bogota PD and Bogota FD versus Senior. Uh, basketball, volleyball, and basketball game, it was such a great night. Students themselves were happy to have it, uh, done because they felt like it was, uh, it brought community closer, and they think it's something that we should continue. Uh, going forward, I did, I was happy to see the amount of students that attended to watch. Um, versus the adults, we actually, the kids actually outdid in, in, uh, in, uh, attendance than, than the attending adults. Um, I, I would love to extend the thank yous to everyone who volunteered, the coaches, um, who made it fun. And the referees who came, who also made it fun for both sides to, uh, participate. Uh, the PTO, um, uh, as far as I know, does, uh, plan on continuing to have that event. So it was a great, successful event, I, I wish more attended, and hopefully being that this was our first year doing it, we will continue doing that. Um, we didn't do faculty, we did against BP, the, the PD and the FD, um, to try again to bridge communities. That was one, and then the other thing I wanted to mention is I also attended the, uh, the school play this past weekend, and. God, I love Wednesday, I love the Addams Family period, so any interpretation that's provided, I'm, I'm gleeful to just sit there and listen and watch. Um, the kids did an outstanding, I'm sorry, the young adults did an outstanding job. And I just, I, I, our drama club always puts it out there and they always hit it out in the park, so I am so grateful to them. For continuing, and you know, sometimes their resources are not so many, but they make a lot out of a little as well. So kudos to them, uh, I attended the Saturday night, um, showing at seven PM, but I heard. Fridays and the matinee on Sa- on Saturday were well attended as well, it was great to see community come out and support.
I will say, it was amazing.
It was amazing.
I saw Susan, I saw Beastie, I had Trina, my kids cannot sit on Broadway, they sat there.
They laughed so much, I heard them.
It was, it was, listen, I, I will tell you this, if there's a way to take this. And go to like the Hackensack Theater, which is right across from my office, and, and make a fundraising campaign out of this, it's worth it. These kids are professional act, young adults, as Trina would say, they're professional actors. It is insane, I, I was shocked.
Yeah, I was.
It was being at Broadway, if we had like better heating and, and so all the stuff, and. Yeah, it was really hot, and we had a little better stuff going, I will tell you though, i- it's worth your two hours. It is absolutely, well, you know, this referendum brings another, a new auditorium to play. Um, but I would tell you, it's impressive, and I think we're gonna have it a few years, based on what I understood. Um, you're not losing a lot of seniors, right?
Um, no, there were, there were a few.
Yeah, so, so that's really gonna, it's gonna hold up, and I think we should start looking at a bigger picture. Because that Wednesday, the whole, everything about it, my son, my, it was great, and it can, and honestly, it's a true fundraiser.
Yeah, it's great.
Um.
One thing I will say, that the drama club gets a lot of the, the conversation around this, and they should, because they did a fantastic job.
Mm-hmm.
But as somebody who spent middle school through high school in band, that band was on.
The band!
Yes. That band was amazing.
So my son is a musician, and he gets up, he goes down to the band, and he wants to congratulate the band. So think about, from a musical perspective, they know that it's quality, he said, I gotta get up, because that band did a great job.
Yeah, no, they did.
It was beside my point, they have a tune, right, they, they can get it. Um, the other thing is, I also attended, on the same day, uh, the teachers, uh, what was it? Uh, educators versus children, uh, sports, STEAM, STEAM. So they also were playing like basket, you should have seen it, what a big crowd, big crowd. Uh, I mean, there was hundreds of kids, I mean, I don't know where they all came from, I didn't think they would come out like that.
We saw the hug mascot also.
And then, I was gonna say that.
That was great.
The STEAM PTO brought out, uh, uh, Lilian mascot, a true mascot. Uh, those kids thought it was amazing, so STEAM, I think it's one of the first schools with a live mascot, right?
No.
No, but you know what I mean, a person running with a whole mascot, and I, and I believe, and I might be wrong, Sherry, you can correct that. I believe that it was a high school student who did it.
That's great.
And whoever did it, all the kids were looking, and I was looking, and I could not figure it out. Whoever did it, if he could do backflips and off a trampoline, he or she would, because they were having a blast, and the kids loved it. And I want to clear for the record, um, because I made a statement, and sometimes you have to be, um, conscientious, and also. Uh, you gotta have gratitude, when I said previous. Um, you know, board administration, I think over the last eight years, six years, there has been a lot of changes. Um, but we know there's, there was people up here for twenty-some years. Um, and they were true to that, whatever thought process they had, but. Things have in Bogota really transpired over the last five, six years, you would say, Kennedy? So we want to say six years, so he doesn't take all the credit. But, but kudos to that administration that, you know, was here prior to us, you know, they got parking lots ready. You know, they fought for different things, so kudos to them, you know, we do it, we take a lot of credit, but. You know, we gotta give credit too, right, because you gotta, I learned from my dad. Know where you come from, so that you know where you're going, remember where you come from, so that you know what path you're taking, right, so. So to stay true to that, stay true to yourself, uh, section thirteen, um. Thirteen dot one, opening of hearing on public remarks. Hearing of public remarks, I wonder if I took it, if I stole anyone's thunder, is there a motion to open the floor to hearing on citizens on public remarks?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Navarro? Is there any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a member of the public who would like to address the board, speakers, please state your name and street address, you have five minutes. Do you have anybody, Mr. Kennedy? Ms. Salmo?
Sherry?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Sherry Salmo, three fifty Large Ave. I will respectfully just, uh, correct you, Mr. Miranda, it was a student versus faculty games. Uh, it, yeah, it was very well attended, it was basketball and volleyball, uh, one hour each, it was. Fantastic, we had faculty galore, something about the students being able to play. Their teachers just really gets them amped up. It was, we were throwing candy at, at them, we were giving out shirts. We introduced Lily, the mascot, kids went nuts. We plan on having Lily, uh, the hawk at many, many future STEAM events. Uh, it was a fantastic night, that night in particular, went straight to our fifth grade. Uh, sending them off properly, and that's, um, that's just how we raise money for them, they have the grams. That we do for them, and then the faculty night, um, so we plan on big things for our fifth grade. And then of course, uh, our Read-a-thon, we're, uh, almost at eleven thousand dollars raised, it's still going until the thirty-first, so we're still. Accepting those donations, um, hoping to maybe put down. A payment on another big ticket item for the fall, Mr. Alves and I have spoken about that, and then I know Mr. Kennedy and the board. Are aware of what we're trying to do, and all excited about it. And then today, uh, was the first day of our book fair, uh, Scholastic Book Fair. Uh, not a fundraiser by any means, we make it as cheap as, um, as the books could possibly be. Just a reminder for parents, it is gonna be available. It was available today, and then tomorrow during school hours, Thursday during school hours. Uh, Mr. Alves has. A very scheduled, uh, structured schedule down for all the classes. And then from six PM to eight PM, for, uh, parents to be able to join their kids tomorrow night, which is Wednesday. Uh, come out, and we of course have a big table filled with teachers' picks, so if you want to donate. Um, any books to your child's class, all the teachers picked out, you know, three to six books, and it's all, it's all great stuff, so. Um, lots to, lots to come, thank you for announcing the last day of school. So now I can prepare for our huge party that we do, and, um. Yeah, thank you everyone for coming out to Student Faculty Games, it was really, really a fun night.
Thank you. That's all? Thank you, Ms. Kennedy, uh, do I? Lisa D, please? Lisa D? Please state name and address.
Lisa Demaro, two thirty-six Walnut Avenue. I have a concern, actually, today there was a lockdown drill at Bixby, but the lockdown system was not utilized. It was just announced over the PA system, which the kitchen staff cannot hear ever. And the gym teacher also didn't hear it, so. I'm not sure how he realized there was a lockdown, but we realized there was a lockdown because we saw him take his class and leave. You know, I, I just wanted to know if the board is aware that I guess something is wrong with the lockdown system there, or. You know, I was just wondering what the issue is.
So I, I will come and speak to you about that, I'm not gonna speak publicly about that.
Okay.
That's something that, uh. That we are dealing with, but that's not something I want to speak publicly about, so, uh, I'll come and see you tomorrow.
Okay, is there any way that you can get? Even just the PA system into the kitchen, so we can hear it?
Like I said, I will come and speak to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, those are matters that the board doesn't really intervene in. Uh, that's for the administration and its staff to discuss, monitor, repair, uh, and it shouldn't be discussed in public, for the record. Okay, anyone else? Someone wants? If anyone else would like to speak, just please raise your hand. Team Rivera? Rivera? Rivera, you're on mute. Team Rivera, you're on mute. Go on once. Okay, we're gonna have to move on, Team Rivera, I'll give you another second, I think, you're off mute now, would you like to speak? Okay, I have to move on. Do I have a motion to close hearing of, of the public?
Motion.
Mr. Chavez, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Rocket, any board discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're not moving to executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
That was not valid, do I have a second?
Second.
Lastest I've ever heard you say something. Mrs. Rocket? All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone.